Where Brian?
All right, the recording has started. Can I get a motion?
Make a motion to come out of executive session at ten eighteen P M.
Oh, sorry.
All right, so we got a Ryan. First Travis second to come out of executive session at ten eighteen. And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. McGreevy. Any opposed? All right, we're back in executive session. So we have a couple of things. We were discussing for contracts to make sure that we are on the same page about how to approach them. And because sometimes when you're negotiating contracts, with comparative information, it needs to be confidential. And so there's a couple of motions that need to come out of this. And so where does the council want to start? Not everybody wants, slow down, I can't keep up.
More information needs to be shared in the item number A.
Nothing at this time. There's no action taken on item number A. Item number B. The Gov Office contract is the website that we use and it's coming up for renewal.
I give Deb, I want to do a motion to give Deb the ability to turn around and look at alternative options.
Okay.
With?
With Lacey and Linda.
Yes, yes, with Lacey and Linda.
Not to exceed current pricing.
Now it's expenditure. Okay, so we have a motion on the table that Brian has offered that they'd like to make a motion that I have the ability to evaluate and negotiate an alternative technology that doesn't exceed the current budget and including Lacey and Linda in that evaluation process. That is the motion table. Linda, did you get all that or do you need help?
You repeat it.
Certainly.
Mayor to negotiate.
And evaluate an alternative website. Can we just say website and or digital media contracts? Can we do that?
Sure you can.
Lump them, yeah, absolutely.
Brian, you want to start over? Just kidding. So Brian would like to make a motion to allow the mayor to work with City Hall staff to negotiate alternative digital media contracts, not to exceed current budget without further council approval.
Brian, you good with that?
Yep, hundred percent.
How about negotiate and enter into?
Oh, sorry.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Sorry, Linda, that's negotiate and enter into alternative digital media contracts to the City Hall not to exceed current budget expenditures without further council approval. Okay, Linda. Okay, uh, do we have a second?
And Brian seconded later.
Yeah, second.
Ryan got a second on that one? And then we got a Brian and Ryan. And so just for clarity of the taxpayers, that would be our website contract, our texting contract. And um
Digital media.
Yeah, yeah, any digital media as well as I T services. So digital professional services and media. Actually, digital professional services would be really comprehensive. Brian, would you consider digital professional services just to be all encompassing?
That would kind of cover all of it, wouldn't it? Including the text, that's, yeah, that's everything, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so digital professional services, Ryan, are you okay seconding that?
Yeah.
So we have a first. We have a second on the table for digital professional services to negotiate and enter into alternative contracts not to exceed the current budget amount without my council first. Okay, so that handles anything digital, which could be website, texting, email, I T, whatever. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Uh, when one fails, we just knocked out four items. Motion passes. Now we're on the dogs and cats on mic. So do we have a status on a Kevin Shepard?
Oh, I'm still wandering.
Okay, because he was actually in my backyard this last week. That was neat. Didn't see him today. I'll let you know if I see him tonight. I don't know what the solution is there. I don't even know how to engage at this point in time.
Yes, is there something wrong with this dog? Is it rabid or something?
No.
Just roaming around?
I think it's abandoned.
Somebody banged it?
He does a prenatal control issue now or what?
They're trying to catch it.
And I'm not saying the council has to decide anything. I was just checking on the status of things and letting people, letting taxpayers know that we're aware of it. We're trying to resolve it and anything that any tips, please give the City Hall because I love crisis with the situation.
He made society do it, do it crap, correct?
What's that?
He made society trying to do a live crap, correct?
Correct.
Long as it's not chasing people down and foaming at the mouth, I guess it's not huge.
No, it's just running around scared.
Maybe I'll put out some dog food.
It's scared and sad. On the garage. So anyway, we're just, we're aware of it and it's never anything someone wants to deal with. And so on to feral cats then. You know, because that's not an ideal situation. I mean, there's, you know, obviously people are calling City Hall if there's a feral cat situation, but there's also an alternative solution if we want to consider it. And that is for the city to invest in sterilizing cat food. It's basically cat food that has sterilizing in it. So that way we don't have to worry about more kittens because feral cats are one thing, feral
kitties.
Kitties are a whole nother animal. And so it doesn't cause any harm to the animal, but it does sterilize the animal. And so they can't produce more. So that's something that
Does that sterilize the animal, you know?
As far as I know, it does. But I, I mean, we can look at that. That's all I was going to mention about it for informational purposes. If it's something that want to pursue, we sure can.
Is there a lot of cats running around town?
What's that?
Is there a lot of cats running around town?
Lot of cats.
Underneath the dumpster at the gas station, there's a whole family.
Wow.
And they keep growing and growing and they're all fit a place and they're by Bonnie's Circle.
And they get rid of mice.
And they're always pregnant.
Oh, well, gets rid of the mouse problem or it's true.
Mice, moles, rabbits, over.
Well, they need to work on voles, I can tell you that.
Yeah, they really need to get that appetite on voles. So, you know, I'm not saying it's something we have I mean, it's an option. Especially with Christmas coming. It's going to get cold. So um yeah, frozen kitties are never a good thing. So um yeah, so if there's any stray animals or anything, let City Hall know. They're doing the best we can to try to to rub that in. Okay, so that that was more informational than anything. I know that the different departments do submit updates. We can provide those on the website unless there's something you want to share right now. Maintenance update? Is there anything? It's not alphabetical.
Everything that's
It's by height.
Then why are you first?
I know, right? I know, right? I saw it now.
For the one that's eating pork out there, biggest evil is this kind of information. There isn't any we can get more power down there and nothing put in our own service pretty much. So that would be a ton of dollars to be involved, so.
Question and answer.
Yep. Now, just looking at like the water and wastewater, kind of the same thing I had last month, but then I just kind of show the other of the alternatives that we did not have funding for. Now for the water and wastewater, it's showing what we have for the projects that are projected to be done. Now we just need to figure out how would we want to go with designing that to be I S G. Another.
Who's I S G?
Another engineering firm, the council wants to do R F Ps. Right, R F Ps, transport homes for engineering services on different projects. Depending on whether we want to go off.
So Ryan made up a really good point that he, there's about four or five projects kind of sitting at our doorstep and we got to figure out what to do. Um, there's a couple of different ways to approach this because we obviously have a well established relationship with I S G right now. Although we haven't formally appointed them as a city engineer. We can either, you know, high in the current projects that I S G is already using and look at it from a holistic standpoint and say anything that's tied into the Grant Park thing. You know, should naturally go to I S G because they've done a lot of the diligence already. We don't have the paper duplicate discovery, et cetera, et cetera. That's one way to approach it. Am I going down the right path, right? And then there are some other projects that are external to that, like the second and Oak project or the lift station project, which is separate from the development project that I S G is intimately familiar with. And decide whether or not we want that to go out to bid or if we want to just go ahead and award I S G or if we want to vet that out. I'm learning this less as we go. I understand that when we engage with an engineering company, they do the they have the process, right? And and then they do, they design it and then they present to bids to get the different vendors that will take care of it. And then they monitor the whole process and make sure that everything's taken care of. So I'm not sure if the council, we're getting to a point where we're going to have to start making some decisions. And sooner rather than later, but it's really point of discussion tonight. Brian wanted to make us aware that this is something that we have to consider. I will let you know that I S G has made it very clear that they would love to earn our business consistently across projects. And and they understand whatever path that we want to choose, but they're certainly making themselves available to us and we appreciate that. Although they had asked us to be the city engineer out of the get go, they had no problem proving themselves first. So so that's what I got for you guys. Is that something that you want to discuss tonight or do you want to think about it and discuss later?
Regrets, Justin, for his, for timeline for design and then bidding. Mine is I'm thinking just with the way things work, it would be a late fall probably for some of the projects to get started. Or early next year, I don't know what do you think, Justin, I might design it and then going out to bidding. Wouldn't be able to get any of the work really started summer of.
I would say definitely the water main project. I was starting to kind of pencil together for council for that work. Nearly complete, but if we jump on board and we get it started and design, you know, hypothetically speaking, it's council meeting approval on contract, right? We can get surveyed down, we can have that designed, bid in March. Little aggressive schedule, but that's what we want to hit for a contract and get that constructed within the fall. That open segment, we'd have to evaluate our scope a little bit more. I was just reading based off of those facilities assessments, making sure we got the same game plan on that. That one would probably push a little bit where we would probably still try to hit that same timeframe, March, April for bidding. But we'd probably extend that construction timeline. Mainly a station, I think that's kind of the different standalone project where we could get that with that this summer as well. But that would be also another question for council. Do you guys want to take on all three of those projects, see them here too?
Yeah, I think with the main location, I've talked to Justin in regards to, I know one of our facilities planned was not to do another lagoon and it was to be a mechanical plant, which is millions of pounds dollars. Where I talked to Justin, it has got a wetland, but you can pay to move wetlands and, you know, and then utilize our area down there for another lagoon. Maybe doing like a blower system to help with the digestion of the waste. So we would make our, the reason why the lagoon isn't really the main plan is because of the wetland and the land there. The reason we need our wastewater facility to be upgraded here eventually when we get too many new residents, we won't have a two hundred and seventy days capacity in our system, which Daner requires. So that's why we're looking at that, if we are able to move a wetland out of cell, we probably have enough expansion for the future growth of the developments we have. Plus maybe we could add some more growth.
What is our current capacity now?
That's your facilities planning. And I think we are, right now, we are at capacity for two hundred and seventy day, but when that development is filled, we won't have the recommended capacity holding timeframe that Daner, that Daner likes.
I thought we did. Thought I read that, because I thought that was a question we had when the development was coming in, if the wastewater can handle additional load.
I think it
But I
It can, but I think that's one of the plans was to
Yeah, we knew we were on the cusp of it and we knew that expansion was necessary.
And I think we have the hundred and eighty day capacity. It's just, I think, they wanted them to hundred and seventy day. Um, where we, I mean, we have, I mean, with our artificial wetland, we could probably take the growth and we can move the water. I mean, I think we would have no problem unless there was a major flood. Because that's only thing that kind of works against us and flooding of the river. But with that, we would have, we can discharge, because we never discharge outside of our system.
Gotcha.
So we can remove our water right now into our wetlands and it'll evaporate and work through the system. So we do have capacity, but by the size of our system, we don't have the capacity per Daner required.
And if we add another lagoon, it buys us some more time to keep our systems internally. Because if we're shipping our sewage out somewhere else, then we could be subjected to fees, fees that we cannot control, lower budget for.
Better fees or if we build our own technical plant hire another operator plus then you actually have your own cost to treat.
So
A lagoon system is the cheapest.
Right now, another lagoon is absolutely the most ideal situation with where our city is right now.
That's where we have to have our engineering firm follow up to make sure we can actually make another lagoon.
Got it.
And so like Brian and I talked, we got Rachel who's she's known a lot of wastewater great at what she does with the wastewater. So we're going to sit down with her. Talk through a bunch of that stuff and have analysis that we'll be able to report back on and show the feasibility and, you know, the big thing is to, you know, once we put the lagoons and we go the lagoon route, okay, this is this is the amount of growth that we can sustain with the two. So I have all that information there. That we'll figure out anything, so.
So as far as timeline goes, when do we need to start making these decisions?
Get projects done.
I would say on or right away or Yeah, with the looping and then the open second, if we want to get those, if we really want to get those constructed in next year's timeframe, say twenty twenty-three. I would need to get a follow up.
So here's what I can say definitively, my recommendation would be to choose I S G with anything attached to the development. So that any looping projects, the fourth to fifth project, anything that ties into that because they've already done so much due diligence. I think it makes perfect sense to use I S G for those projects specifically. But and so the council needs to decide on that if they want to agree to that or not. As far as the second and Oak and the lift station, those are two separate projects that are outside of that. So then you have to decide if you want to continue to use I S G or if you want to vet engineering firms to oversee that. And so it's just a matter of strategy of like, you guys are comfortable with.
And those two are not I'd say push
High priority.
Yes. Since we're working with the whole development right now and all coincides with that looping, that would be a high priority if we get it done. And since I S G has already been surveying, they've already done a lot of like, we've had to set it again. Just a little bit outside of what they've done.
I will tell you, I have not had a single point of disappointment in working with the company of I S G. Even when you're on vacation, I can't believe they let you go on vacation. But yes, your stand, your stand and your stunt, your stunt only did fine. And so I will say I don't have a bad review in working with I S G. But you guys get to decide that now, me.
Can I be comfortable making a motion to have I S G tackle the the engineering phase of looping of the water main on Sixteenth and Seventh? And from Fourth and Fifth?
Second.
We have a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I S G, you are finally going to be our engineering firm for those projects. Do we want to talk about second and Oak right now? Do we want to consider other people or do we want to go ahead with I S G?
John, can we, can we make a vote on that if that wasn't on the agenda?
No.
Oh. God, it's me every time.
It's under the maintenance report, John. That's listed on the agenda.
Yeah, it's under maintenance up there.
I didn't, I
I'll update. They amateur.
So unofficially get rolling on it and
Yeah.
And get familiar with it and roll on it and
Let's take that up in December.
You know what, Travis, you're absolutely a hundred percent right.
Yeah. Justin, you don't have
And you talked about more there.
No, he's right. You were ever right, I would tell you.
I'm delirious. So Justin can bring his
Okay, let's, let's formally vote on that next month then. Let's put that on the agenda for next.
Yeah.
Next week.
Thank you.
Brian, what is the, so just kind of thinking outside, just on the maintenance in general. As far as lovely goes, there's been the conversation on when to do that overhaul project as far as with utilities and whatnot.
Especially with the school was also part of that discussion and having all the heavy equipment going back and forth on the school.
Right. So at what point do you stop saying, because that was the initial
That's a question you brought up before.
Initially, when we started, that was why we didn't do it first, well, we had the development coming in, the all dirt work, we want to beat the shit out of the road, well, people coming, this guy coming on the road all the time regardless of what they want to or not. When, when do we, when do we bite that bullet? Is there a better time or worse time to bite that?
And what's, I guess utilities are pretty much pretty minimal, I think, because water main has been updated. And so has the sewer, the twelve inch going from first to third. And then that southeast sewer, a lot of the underground stuff has been new. And then when you get up into the Baltic Heights and Lumberyard Division, it's all off of the street. So really what lovely is the rebuild of the street itself.
There's no infrastructure projects that can overlap to that, so we can pick a man that's cost sharing.
Oh, great, with when that sewer, the twelve inch sewer main was put up. So there is a very limited structure of, by a blast or a sewer main that has to be done. I think the water is up to halfway between second and third. And I think then it rounds the corner here and I think we're making it, yeah, block and water, I mean, that's not there. But everything else is out of, like, pretty much out of the right direction. We wouldn't have to. We wouldn't get the funding as far as to the way, this is more of a general fund.
Yep, that's, that's going to come up on in spring when we get our chip ceiling. Well, because we pushed it off for the last, every year that I've been here, so.
And we need to look at Four Street when we're looking at Lovely.
Yep.
Yeah, Lovely comes, there's a couple of streets, the lovely zone, I guess.
And specifically talking water flow. Because we need to look at the down flow and getting to the river and Murphy's Pond and Four Street being too low. We're, we're probably going to have to look at raising Four Street.
And then at that one would be a storm sewer, which is huge with the utilities. I know, was it oh, early two thousands, they did, they did, I think they do a mill and overlay on Lovely. I think they went all the way through town. That's, I mean, there's spots that we could do, it improves some spots.
Is that, that kind of pays though?
Money and
But that's
Mill and overlay is a temporary fix that lasts for five to six years, but the cracks that you get from underneath the mill job reflect through the next year.
You need the whole base.
So, I mean, if you're gonna, if you're gonna redo the highway, start from the base because then the reflective cracking will never go away. Um, from my experience, it happens the next year. For that first frost, you get the cracks.
Yep.
Is that big enough project where we need, instead of just jumping in there without any input and blasting a new road down? Is that something we need to have some sort of oversight committee or whatever you want to call it? Engineer perhaps to assess what our needs are and see what the best method to go about.
At that, we you want to do some soil sample and borders and figure out what is underneath a bay. And then it would be CO tech would do a recommendation.
Yeah, core samples.
Yeah, the engineering firm would go through and give the recommendation on if you do fabric and CO grid or to do a cement stabilization. I mean, that's the big thing right now. Cement stabilization is not the way to go because there's no cement powder, here's another. We actually, Pratt Valley School District, we use flash. One of our products.
Yeah, and I've been thinking on just a logistical standpoint of traffic flow and layout.
That's going to be the, you will have to push your timeframes because you want to be done before harvest. And then you also, during the year, you will have a lot of equipment going through with farmers and fertilizer plants pushing. So it's, yeah.
Exactly. Same, there needs to be a game plan in place on what way to do that. Yeah. Stretch and and because if you're going to do it once, you were going to want to not have to do it again for the next fifty years.
Do you think there's any possibility of cost sharing with accounting? City does that all the time with the state, you know?
They do, and I don't know how they would do that. I mean, if, say, say we did a mill overlay back in the day, they might
They might do it themselves.
They might pave it for you.
Yeah.
You, you, you pay for the materials, pay for the milling, they might pay it for you. But a reconstruction project, that's so hard. We would have to ask the county to see if they would be willing.
It's worth the conversation just to say, hey, here's what's on our radar.
Yep.
It is there.
Give us a million dollars.
I mean, it's a look at the culverts.
Do they go through town with the plows?
Yes.
Yeah, so, I mean, they do maintain part of it.
They help us maintain it.
They don't, right, right, they don't have to because they go through town and maintain the whole row.
Thank you.
Correct. They, they plow and they'll salt and sandwiches of benefits to the community. I know part group was the community that lost that benefit because they got because they did not agree with the way that Congress is doing it. So for that's
So we just say thank you.
Yes.
We're looking at that.
Yeah.
Something that they are willing to help us out with anything.
Just say thank you.
Yes.
Might be a phone call worth making.
And I, you know, back in the day, I think they would be, you know, engineering, you know, they, I don't know how many engineers they have on staff. And they used to have a couple of engineers on staff and, oh, we can help out with this, you know, different sources like that, but but yeah, that would be a reach out to see what they would be willing to help if they would.
But this is where a comprehensive plan comes into play. There's a couple of programs right now where the state of South Dakota granted the more, can I talk about this?
Yeah, I would say capital improvement plan.
Yeah, capital improvement plan, a program that's been vetted. I S G is one of the firms that was approved to execute that plan. And so Baltic is applying for that.
Yep, so there'd be a part of that program where state, well, providing grant for fifty percent of the C N P plan for sixteen communities across the state. So there will be an application process to City Hall. Call up an application submitted to the state. It's on a checkbox, it's only a fifteen thousand dollars. City Hall have to provide that on a match for a capital improvement plan. Really what that capital improvement plan does is it looks at projects like this. Gets a month type of plan on how we're going to pay for it. So now maybe that's year three that falls in where the budget's going to lay, you know, so then year one, two, three, we're planning the budgeting that, we get to three, pay for it. You know, every year you're just updating that. So you've got five different rolling projects. That way you're not running into surprises on, hey, how are we going to pay for this? What do we have going on? You're already, always having those engineering studies, conversations, it's just a rolling ball just to really provide growth and help. So
And it's a fantastic body of knowledge to help subsequent administrations.
Well, we need to have a mill and overlay program in this town.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's general maintenance. Yes, yes, have so many, so much
And more importantly, the taxpayers need to understand how they pay for this stuff.
Yep.
I mean, if you it's really easy to say, well, we got the roads, we got the curb and gutters, we got the sidewalks, but the taxpayers don't really fully understand the municipality finance. One on one. So I mean, that's something that we can work out soon. Okay. Thank you for that. Anything else? All right, so then we'll get your feedback on that. Council can shoot on what they want to do from an engineering standpoint. We'll talk about that next month. Ms. Linda, what are what are our mandatory items tonight?
Okay, so now this I didn't want this through a wrench in it or not, but we're doing part of the project that we're getting funding for. And early, is that right, Justin? And early, is that right, Justin?
We'll have to look on, uh, we, we should be able to all those funds were split up when they were applied for further. So when we sit down to get those grants and yes, our F loans kick off. Just have to make sure we have those conversations with it.
Oh, we're gonna draw down.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because we should, we should be able to to just navigate that, yeah?
Yeah. Okay, so then, but then what, um, we were talking about was, um, the timeline for who said, I can't remember what it was, for setting the loan or whatever, it's only two weeks. So that's not an emergency situation. Um, what we have to decide tonight, if we pass this resolution is when we're gonna start charging the surcharges, but when the loan is set, interest starts. And I don't know how much the interest is gonna be, um, but that's something to consider. If, if there's a year gap, you know, we'll be paying interest for a year until we start drying down.
So, so let me, let me dumb this down because these guys did a really good job explaining it to me the other day. So when you're looking at this loan, we know we have to pay through it through our utilities, because that's how a city finances these kinds of projects. And, um, when we get that loan, we have to pay back quarterly, right? The, the loan, when we give the loan, it's a quarterly payment.
We have to, when we get the loan or when it's approved, set, they call it, interest starts.
Right, but we don't know the interest rate.
We do all our drawdowns for all the projects, then the payments start.
So for that reason, it's always nice to start these surcharges early. So we have a pool to draw from, so A, we have a buffer to handle the insurance, or it's the interest, sorry.
Yeah.
The interest as well as having that quarterly payment ready. It's not like you get the bill and you pay it by month and then you get more money and you pay it. It's better to be a little in advance of that because then you have that money to pay the bill with. And then if we end up having surplus, we pay it off sooner, which means we pay less interest. Does that make any sense to you?
Well, the question I have is if they're starting the interest at the initial date, why would we not want to start our payments sooner and cut the number of months and days and then that was that, that interest is accumulating because it's a, it's all the.
The interest, once you take your first draw, that's when your interest starts, right?
They said when the loan was set.
But, but we don't draw until we pull one out, so I don't think we pay interest. And then we can't really, and then it can pay interest until you or you set the.
There's basically advantages to, to implement the surcharge early, because for obvious mathematical reasons. And then also having that pool of money to lose. And then we can pay things off early, we just can't pay towards it before we get granted the money. We can issue the surcharge and start accumulating. And so that's what Linda was talking about, is starting the surcharge until the, the loan is set, so we have the buffer built in. And hopefully we won't have to adjust the rates.
Yeah, I hadn't even thought of interest and it was after hours, so I don't know how much the interest will be or if it's something to worry about, but she recommended, you know, she had recommended the lady from, um, that handles the financial part of it, um.
Is that Sophie?
Steph, no, this is Dee.
Oh dear, okay.
Stephanie Riggle.
Okay.
She recommended starting, um, closing six months before the drawdown starter or whatever. So you'd have enough to pay the interest, she said, which I hadn't even that done with the interest. I was thinking we'd be saving up for the first payment. But, um, so then that worried me. If we, um, close a loan like a year before the project, all that interest, we've gotta have, I mean, three point some million dollars, there's gotta be interest.
Nice to be interested.
Have extremely balanced. So that's what worried me then, but then I talked to Justin and, um, he was thinking by fall, right, that the majority would be.
Yeah, and I, I think we'll be good. We, we'll get on the homeless stuff again here. Hold out a little tighter.
We just want to get this executed as quickly as possible.
We want to get those, you know, surcharge in, you know, obviously prior to, but you know, definitely don't want to put it in way, way too soon either.
But we also want to secure it because we don't want to be left on the tail end and have the money run out.
Right.
Because you know what, federal governments change their mind all the time.
Yep. Yeah, luckily I saw that this is a pretty stable program.
Mm-hmm. Well, you know, if you, if you listen. You listen to the press conferences lately, there's been talk about whether or not all the infrastructure deals are gonna be in play.
Correct.
So the fact, if we can get this nailed down and moving and secure those funds sooner rather than later, then it can't be, can't take away what you already given.
Absolutely.
So that's why getting it done sooner rather than later is good.
And, um, the surcharges are, I mean, I think they're eight dollars and fifteen cents and eight dollars and forty bucks.
Yeah, it was somewhere around seventeen bucks or something, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was better than we had thought, um.
Thank goodness.
Less, less, it was like sixteen something altogether, um.
So that would be monthly on the water bill, correct?
Eight fifteen on the sewer and I believe it was eight forty five on the.
Yeah, sixteen seventy.
And that covers, with, with that surcharge covers monthly on the six hundred rooftops that we were talking about is the fourth to fifth project, the sixth to seventh project, and the lift station project. And the Oakland second project. So the seventeen dollars a month added to our water bills will handle those four projects, because it's the only way the city can pay for that. The nice thing is, is a third of that expense is getting funded by a federal grant. Today. We just know.
So what we have to decide tonight is when we're going to, um, start the surcharge. For both of these resolutions. And then they have to send me an environmental review to publish. And we can publish these and we can start in a month or so, or we can start in four months, or we can start whenever.
Do that final check to see with when that interest starts varying, um, the count when our full of date. If you were saying something that too, they don't did rather, if you close it and you have to go back for more funding, funding, it's harder once you close your loan. Cause then the deal's sealed, but if there is any change in funding and it's still open, open, then you might be able to adjust.
So it's like a home equity line of credit.
I know.
These are bonds, these are backed by bonds, right? So when they go to market, they're fixed or they fixed term.
Okay.
So you run any trouble when you try to vary the bond, there's gonna be they have a guaranteed way of return for a guaranteed period.
Which is why we're requiring the city to show that we have predictable income coming.
Yeah, otherwise you can have deficits. Say a penalty.
And the surcharge is specifically allocated to that loan. It does not vary, there's no earmarking, there's no fat, there's no nothing. We, we borrow the money, goes to the loan, it goes to a separate account, it's a very clean line.
He, uh, Drew said that, uh, yeah, don't, I mean, traditionally don't set the loan before you award bids, which would give us quite a bit.
Okay, so next month?
Would be looking at a work.
So, so that would give us time if we wanted time, but otherwise.
I, I, even more importantly, that we need to have a communication strategy so the taxpayers understand why their water bill's gone up.
Yep.
So I do think that we need a couple of months to formulate that and explain to people what they're getting for that money and why it's happening.
Let me make a game plan to have something prepared for next month's meeting and implement surcharges January one.
Would you like I S G to put together a quick one pager on that?
I want you to do all the things, yes.
In the past, I've sent out a letter with maps to the citizens and before a project with surcharges or that literally helped. Didn't get hardly any complaints or, you know, be, I well better from it because they have a letter with everything that they so that was really nice to, um, just to mail out.
I wonder if we have a communication strategy in place. If we get that digital media negotiated, we might have another way to do that. Okay, what else we got, Ms. Linda?
Okay, so we're gonna wait, um, Bergen Basin, um, came to me and asked me for a garbage forgiveness request. I asked her to write a letter stating what, um, what their mission was or whatever and the letter did not state that, but talking to Deb. I guess they do a lot of stuff here in town, a lot of, um.
They do. Here, here, that's a lot of stuff.
Yeah.
We're looking on.
Their garbage is forty five a month, but it's brought up, they do have an apartment that, um, somebody's living in.
A minister's living up there.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
So is that just garbage? Is that garbage and water?
Not just garbage.
It's garbage, they have a dumpster.
They pay forty five, that's included in, that apartment is included in that forty.
What portion of it is the dumpster?
It's all forty five.
Okay, so it's not split out at all?
No, so the question was, should the apartment be split and billed separate from the business?
Are they getting rent?
Are they getting, is the water all on one bill or is it two?
It's on one bill.
Well, it, it won't matter because if you decide to go to split them, their garbage cans will always be empty. They'll always throw their garbage in the thrift store. There's ways around that.
Yeah.
I mean, seriously, if you're gonna, if you're gonna think about doing something like that, it's forty five dollars, they're not for profit. Garbage and More is already on board according to.
But.
But, there's always a but.
But I tried calling Garbage and More to see what the story was there because he, the, the thing was, oh, you know, we would gladly give you free garbage, but we're under contract. But we can't.
So basically what happens is either the city absorbs it.
Right.
Or they pay it. That's, I mean, we're gonna pay it.
Yeah.
So it's either the city pays it for them.
Yeah.
Or they pay it.
So I was trying to call him to see if he was willing to deduct that money from his contract every month. And I didn't get a call back.
I can't imagine one.
Yeah.
But, um, yeah, I had no idea how they did, I really didn't. And I wanted her to put that in my letter.
I even think she's come down, in the past, she used to come down to the office and volunteer time to watch the phones over lunch hours, I mean.
I heard that.
She's been, well, doesn't get called upon, she volunteers for.
Yeah, you know, and I don't think it's a question about the value that they bring to the community. I think it's just a question of whether or not the city wants to thank them and that by not paying a bill. And then I think we need to, if we're gonna do that on the auspices of a nonprofit, what other nonprofits would have the ability to come? I mean, if you're gonna do that, what you do for, in, in my opinion.
Yeah.
Take this however you want. What you do for one, yeah, but for all. In these kind of situations, what you do for one, you do for all. So that's how I would encourage you to look at it, is that's what you're deciding. And in my support, whatever you want, and I learned what the bargain is and does, so that's not a statement of that at all.
Linda, would she be happy with a split on it?
Um, that might be fair.
You could consider it like this too, back in the day on how the city, the Legion split, um, using the Legion for facilities by having a lower cost liquor license, is how they traded the rent. You could consider this as if, um, Dally is operating the skates to be rented out at no cost to the city. Or, you know, you, you could find a way to make it right. An unofficial way to make it right, I guess, to compensate costs when they're together. Depending she donates, overlaps will be charged on a monthly basis, that deal. I mean, I couldn't even tell you all the list of stuff.
I think if we do that, we should have to articulate it though, so that way it's explained and the, the city get why we're doing it.
Pray per se.
I, I think it's a very creative solution. I just think it needs to be articulated. Do we want to brainstorm more, some more on this one? It's the first we've voted about.
Yeah, and she had just, and I just hope in the letter would say one. But yeah, we can.
I just had a conversation with her and say, hey, I'm personally on board with it. I'm perfectly fine. I just want to make sure that. Want to say it?
Sure, yeah.
I think the point about other nonprofits is a good one. I think Mickey's point about this is they church functioning nonprofit, so they're under their umbrella, you know? Your, your pressman there is one to be considered. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm paying a water bill, whether it's a minimal water bill or a minimal garbage bill or whatever. If they've got people residing in an apartment, they're on property, why are, why is that not split out from the business?
There'd probably be a decent information to gather as well.
And whether they're paying rent or not, they're still residing here, they're still using the services. So where is the fairness for them not paying again for the services that they're using?
Valid questions.
Just because the River Community Church has decided to house them to support them through seminary and, and that church and rent does not mean that they shouldn't be paying the utility.
Valid, valid points, yeah. Valid points, lots to think about, guys.
I love the heck out of the bargain base.
Oh, sure, yeah. It's not a statement of their purpose at all. It's just trying to figure out how to mitigate. Anything else, Ms. Linda?
Um, I just, FYI, um, our health insurance went up four percent, which was pretty low. You know, um, and I still think it's the best deal around.
Do we need to vote on that or anything, or do we just, are you just letting us know?
Um, I don't know.
John, do we have to?
It's part of your benefits.
And then, um, they do offer life insurance and it's such a good rate that, um, I was just wanting approval, the employees I talked to, um, they will pay for it themselves.
Oh, so it's like a pastor expense?
Yeah, but we just want permission to be, to have.
Is there any classroom, any other thing from the city?
No, it goes right on my buck up insurance premiums.
Get a small term deal or whatever?
Um, yeah, yeah, it's like ten dollars a month for fifteen thousand. So it's a really good message in a family.
The city would pay it and then it would be what it paid.
Employees are willing to be in.
Gotcha.
Is that something they do it on? If it's an employee expense?
I don't think so, if you.
No, it's.
I think we need approval though to to have them offer it to us, no matter who's paying for it.
That makes sense.
Isn't that already an offering though? When you get your, when you sign up for your benefits?
I don't think.
Participate.
It's never been a part of our benefit package. We have to redo every November.
Yeah, that's what we're reviewing this year.
Yeah, initially, when you set it up though, you should have a state saying you'll never have to redo, do it again.
They said that the city, no, we can't sign up for it now because the city does not offer the health, uh, life insurance for it, but some water anymore, there's water in. So and then we didn't use permission to, to let them offer, you know, that will pay for itself.
I wouldn't have a problem with that.
I'll make a motion for that.
So then, Linda, your role would simply be to do that payroll deduction and pay the insurance.
I'll second it.
Yeah, along with the medical premium.
That's what I thought I was asking, but it doesn't matter, it's late. No, yeah, no, no, I did a motion and Brian seconded. And then Nikki called, can only wish. And then my mayor said, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ocean passes.
Brian, are you still sober?
I think John's right.
If you're not, we're envious.
That's all I have, and that's all we have, so, uh, communications update was a place for. You said plenty for the, for me, and any council updates? Then I guess we're down to a jury. Brian, you wanna turn?
Should you, should you bring up just something for the public about the meeting, um, in the land?
Can you say that one more time? You sound like Charlie Brown's teacher.
Do you wanna talk anything about, uh, seventy four and the sale of it, and, uh, the money on that, anything?
City's not a party to the. Do you wanna share information about that? Seventy four?
I can, I'm not at liberty to say at this point in time.
Okay.
Stay tuned.
Stay tuned.
Make a motion to adjourn. Second.
We got a first, we got a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any on the list? Ocean passes, we're adjourned. We'll get your checks.